October 7, 2021, meeting of the Planning Board. First item of business I have is an announcement to make regarding in-person meetings. An advisory from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health has been issued for all non-vaccinated and full vaccinated people to wear a mask in public indoor settings in areas of substantial or high transmission. Shrewsbury, Worcester County has been categorized as a high level of community transmission for over a month. Therefore, we require that all employees and visitors in all municipal buildings wear a face mask. Exemptions from the mask requirement include those with a medical or other eligible condition. In addition, we ask all those attending in the meeting to practice social distancing, leaving space between yourself and other non-related parties also attending the meeting. The board members here tonight will also be masked and practicing social distancing through their seating arrangements. When speaking, we do ask that your face mask remains on. Thank you. So our first item of business to review minutes, we have no minutes for this month. I do have bills here. Summary of bills, I've got GZA Geo-Environmental, Inc., for Falcon Farms Geo-Technico Review, an amount of $3,197.38. Yankee Engineering and Testing Incorporated for Geo-Technical Review for 935 Main Street, $2,925. McMahon Transportation Engineers and Planners, Centec Park Traffic Review, as a response to comments from the meeting, $1,540. Gatehouse, New England Special Town Meeting for Legal Ads, $336. Graves Engineering for Falcon Farms Definitive Plan Review, $1,027.50. Graves Engineering for 800 Boston Turnpike for Site Plan Review, $1,142. Total bills, $10,170.88. Do I have a motion?
I move that we authorize the expenditures as explained by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There are two forms here for signature.
Thank you.
Okay. That's going around. I am open for board member comments. Mr. Rao.
I have no comments, Chair.
Mr. Jerry.
No comments this month?
Mr. Rota-Lakers.
No comments this month, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Thomas.
None this month, sir.
And I have no comments either. Before we begin our meeting and hearings, on occasion, I go off and read our process that we have here tonight. You guys are the benefit recipients of this information. For those who have not been here before, just to make you aware of our procedures, we will open the public hearings. If it is a new hearing, the clerk will read the notice. The proponents will introduce themselves and make their presentation. The Planning Board members and professional staff will ask questions and make comments to which the proponent will respond. The hearing will then be open to the public, abutters and other interested parties for questions and comments to which the proponent will respond. A general discussion will follow, and the Planning Board will either continue or close the public hearing. For the public comment part of the hearing, all speakers are asked to stand prior to speaking and give their names and addresses. I remind you that all comments are being broadcast, as well as being recorded for rebroadcast by the Shrewsbury Media Connections. I further advise you that neither the hearing nor the record should be considered as a vote on the issue before the Planning Board. A vote by the board will be taken after the public hearing has been closed. Please address all conversations through the chair, and please speak up. The sound in this room tends to muffle and does not carry to the listening audience clearly. The microphones that you see are only for the use of Shrewsbury Media Connection. I remind you that people have the right to use their property as they see fit, within the constraints of the town zoning bylaws and the Planning Board subdivision rules and regulations. Be aware that we do not deal with A and R or approval not required lots outside the subdivision, nor do we deal with wetlands or any other conservation issues. Having said that, we have our first public hearing, which is a reconsideration of ZBA special permit for 14 Old Faith Road. Is the proponent?
Mr. Chairman, I have a legal notice.
Oh, yeah, we have.
My apologies. First. You'll notice, Mr. Thomas, please.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will meet on Thursday evening, October 7, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Selectman's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, to hear the following matters. One, to consider the application of Alex Azile and Kim Negren, 14A Old Faith Road, Shrewsbury, Mass., 01545, for a finding in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 16, and provided such a finding is entered by the Zoning Board of Appeals, to then consider the applicant's new application for a special permit to replace and expand a deck on an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at said property. Two, to hear the proposed amendments to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, as follows. A, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw in the town of Shrewsbury relative to Section 7K, inclusionary housing incorporating...
Sir, Karen?
Oh, incorporating the town senate district into the existing regulations for inclusionary housing or to take any action in relation thereto. B, to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaw of the town of Shrewsbury relative to Section 2, Definitions, Section 7, Table 1, Use Regulation Schedule, and Section 7, Development of Sites and Location of Buildings and Structures to Modify the Existing Definition, amend the Use Table and to Establish Zoning Criteria for Outdoor Dining or to Take Any Action Into Relation Thereto. C, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Shrewsbury relative to Section 2, Definitions, Section 7, Table 1, Use Regulation, and Section 7, Development of Sites and Locations of Buildings and Structures to Amend and Add Zoning Regulations Related to Telecommunication Facilities, and to Insert Language for the Regulation of Small Cell Facilities or to Take Any Action in Relation Thereto. D, to see if the town will vote to amend zoning map for the town of Shrewsbury by amending the limited commercial business in Residence B1 zoning districts along Lake Street to account for the changes in the road layout were made during the construction of the new Beale School or to take any action in relation thereto. The complete text of the proposed zoning articles where applicable may be seen during regular business hours in the office of the Planning Department, in the office of the town clerk, at the Municipal Office Building, at 100 Maple Ave, the Shrewsbury Public Library at 609 Main Street, and online at https://shrewsburyma.gov/planning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will open this presentation up if that's all right. One addendum to your opening remarks is that these microphones are now actually live in the room as well, on speakers up above, so that has changed. This was put in the last month, so we are not just streaming live to the TV or to the Internet anymore.
Very good. I'll update my notifications.
Being picked up everywhere across the room, so hopefully everyone can hear us. So the first item of business is, as the clerk read, 14A Old Faith Road. Just to give you a brief explanation, this actually went to a special permit to the Zoning Board of Appeals in July for a new deck on an existing non-conforming structure, on existing non-conforming lot as well. It was denied by the Zoning Board of Appeals, so the applicant came back, as they are allowed to do by Chapter 40A, I forget the section, it was on the legal notice, provided that the Zoning Board of Appeals holds a vote and finds it to be essentially a substantial change from the original plan that was presented and denied. So that is what happened, and a week ago, this past Monday, the Zoning Board of Appeals did meet and did have that finding, that they believed it was substantial, and then they approved the special permit with the newly designed deck. That was what was presented to you this evening, that you have the plans in front of you. So Chapter 40A, and we can argue about whether this should even happen, requires that it comes to the Planning Board as well, and that this board make the similar findings to what ZBA did, in sense, finding that it's a substantial change. So that's what you're being asked to tonight, is to have a vote once the public hearings close, and if you don't have any other questions, and the public doesn't have any questions, to have that vote. So just to explain, the applicant is here, Ms. Negren's here. If you do have questions for her, but...
So this has to be a substantial change from the July of 2021 submission?
Correct, yeah. And otherwise, there's a two-year cooling-off period.
Yeah, I've been on this board 22 years, and I...
Yeah.
This is the first time this has ever come before us.
Yeah, unfortunately, 40A, Chapter 40A, calls out the Planning Board specifically to make this finding. And in fact, the ZBA, as I said, already approved it and found it last week. If the schedule's a little different inmate, in Shrewsbury, I almost said my hometown, that's weird, in Shrewsbury, this would have happened first at this Planning Board meeting, and then CBA. So they conditioned their decision on this vote tonight. So I hope that was as fast and as concise as I think I could make it.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board relative to this? Mr. Rao.
No questions, Chair.
Mr. Jerry.
I have no questions.
Mr. Rota-Lakers.
I have no questions.
No questions.
Thomas, I don't either. Is there any questions from the public, that this is a public hearing? And I see no hands raised, so I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing on the reconsideration of, or actually the, is it the reconsideration of the ZBA special permit, or is it...
The finding, the finding that the new application is substantially different from the denied application.
Right, so I make a motion, we close the public hearing relative to the special permit at 14A Old Faith Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments as far as what we want to do here? Okay, so my understanding is, okay, I'll take a motion.
I move that we make a finding that the special permit application, the current special permit application is substantially different than the 14A Old Faith Road than the one that was submitted in July of this past year, this year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we affirm the ZBA finding.
Yes.
Is that my understanding? Okay, so you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, you learn something new after 22 years.
Aye. First time I've heard it.
Our next item of business is a new public meeting for a new garage and sales office administrative site plan review, location 3 Commerce Road. Mr. Thomas, do you have a legal notice?
There's not a legal notice.
Oh, no, it's public meeting.
So this is an administrative site plan review. You've done several of these in the past.
Yep.
It's site plan administrative because it does not meet the threshold of 20 or more parking spaces or 10,000 square feet newer existing in aggregate on the site. It is for a garage and sales on the site, and it has received a garage license from the Board of Selectmen as well. So as we have done in the past for administrative, is the, it's actually the building inspector/ zoning enforcement officer who has the final say on these, obviously with input from myself, Mr. Truman, the town engineer, and a few others, and then also, of course, the Planning Board gets asked for your comments. So if you have any comments, I'm going to issue a letter either way tomorrow to Ms. Sheehan, the building inspector, either saying that you had no comments, or if you have any comments, I will jot them down, and I'll put them in that letter.
Okay, fair enough. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments relative to this administrative site plan review?
No comment, Chair.
No, Mr. Jerry?
No comments or questions.
Mr. Rota-Lakers.
No, I'm all set.
And Mr. Thomas?
No comments.
I think it's pretty straightforward. I don't have any comments either, so whatever the Planning Department's comment letter, you can just include no additional comments from the Planning Board.
Great, thank you.
This is a public, oh, it's a public meeting, so do we actually have, do we have to close that, or do we have to vote on that?
Oh, you know what? I honestly can't remember what we did in the past. Why don't we close it, and then you can, we'll just close it.
I move that we close the public hearing on the, the public meeting on the 3 Commerce Road Administrative Site Plan Review.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I entertain a motion to...
I move that we approve the site plan for 3 Commerce Road.
Without comment.
Without comment.
Without comment, yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. All set. Next item of business is South Street Falcon Farms, 9-lot subdivision, location is South Street. There is a request for continuance, Mr. Cahill.
Yeah, the next two agenda items, in fact, this one and 800 Boston Turnpike, and we'll have to have two separate votes on each of them for continuance acceptance, have both submitted continuance request letters that we've received by my office, and have been shared with you on the Google Drive that we share, to continue to the November, and I totally forget which number.
Fourth.
Fourth, thank you, everyone knows but me, the November 4 meeting.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the board on this?
No questions, Mr. Getman.
No, sir.
None.
And although I know we've made it pretty clear that we would like to have this project wound down, I do understand that our last meeting required some significant information from the applicant, so I have no issue this time, but I just want to be on record of being forceful in terms of we want to get this project moving along. So for this case, I am in agreement, so I'll, Mr. Rao.
Just a comment, Chair. They were supposed to go back to CONCOM, right? Has the CONCOM made a decision on this?
They have not, however, we did, or I should say, DPW requested an engineering requested that a peer review be done on the wetland crossing. So we did collect a pretty substantial fee from the applicant, and we did hire a peer reviewer to look at it, and they have provided comments. The applicant has not had time to respond to those comments, or his engineer, so my recommendation was to continue to at least allow them that time to respond to those peer review comments. Conservation has not wrapped up, so they will be again on the October agenda for them.
Okay. Very good. Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that we grant the continuance requested by the applicant relative to Falcon Farms until Thursday, November 4 at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our next item, as Mr. Cahill mentioned, is also a request for continuance, is for a parking lot expansion and alterations, site plan approval, sativa for location 800 Boston Turnpike. Does anybody have any questions or comments relative to this particular continuance?
No, sir.
Okay. I want to entertain a motion.
I don't have any comments.
I move that we grant the continuance requested by the applicant relative to the 800 Boston Turnpike, a parking lot expansion alterations and site plan approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our next item of business is a new public hearing for Greenbrier Drive Cul-de-sac Definitive Subdivision, location Zero Greenbrier Drive. Mr. Thomas has a legal notice.
Pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 41 S81T, as amended, the Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, October 7, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., to review and, to review a proposed definitive subdivision as shown on plans entitled Zero Greenbrier Drive, dated September 10, 2021, and 15 sheets prepared by WDA Design Group, 31 East Main Street, Westboro, Mass., 01581, sent by Kenneth T. Strom, PLS, and Barry A. Yashlin, PE. The applicant is Cypress Avenue Development Partners, LLC, 18 Glenwood Street, Natick, Mass., 01760, and the owner is G. and M. Sordillo, 386C Bancroft Highway, Litchfield, New Hampshire, 03052. The property is located easily of Cypress Avenue, exists of one lot. The property is further identified as Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 09, Plot 001000. A copy of the applications, application plans and reports may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Is the applicant present?
Herna, could you touch the pad to turn it on? I'll figure it out.
Good, can I start?
If you could please, if you can come to the front, have a seat, introduce yourself and any others that are going to be presenting.
Good evening. My name is Barry Yatcherson. I work for WDA Design Group, and with me today, I have myself, Greg Scotchey, Carolyn Burke, Larry, and Steve Bloom, and also online, I believe, is Scott Mungrim. They are the project applicants. That's Scott on there. On behalf of WDA Design, we have filed this definitive plan to create access to 25-plus acres of buildable parcel at the end of Cypress Street. We have participated in two working Zoom meetings that has contained town department heads to review this definitive plan, as well as potential future subdivisions. Those meetings were taking place February and May of this year. The existing property is 25.72 acres, and as read earlier on the map and lot, on the site plan that you're looking over there, highlighted in dark green is the overall 25-plus acres. Down in the lower corner, there's an orange area. That is what we're looking for on this definitive plan for the access road and the legal frontage The plans that we've provided to you provide topography, wetland, zoning requirements, abutters list, addresses. They also identify existing utilities and proposed utilities on the multitude of sheets that were presented and can be viewed by the public in the town offices. The proposed project presented here is planned to provide 451 feet of legal frontage, provides a public right-of-way with 128 feet of right-of-way, which is about eight feet greater than what you guys require for, under the regulations, which is 120. That also provides, on the cul-de-sac, the paved surface ability for trucks to turn around, and a grass berm and sidewalk around the whole development. The road will be ADA compliant for access. There shall be an easement for the Shrewsbury Electric Light Company to provide lighting on the end and throughout the entrance to the development. I think if you could switch the page down on that, you'll be able to see a little more of the development area. That's at the intersection of Cypress Avenue and Greenbrier, there's an existing stub that was there. We're going to provide, under this definitive plan, access road in and a cul-de-sac looping around with one curb cut on the southern side. Stormwater, we've provided with the definitive plan, is a stormwater management plan, and that would be Greg Scotchey, our other engineer, has provided and gone through that with you. Greg, do you want to say a few words?
Sure. Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Um, so I'm going to keep this brief and just talk about the site as it is, existing conditions, and then skip over to proposed conditions, and speak briefly to the third-party engineers' review comments as well. The existing site is currently covered, it's a wooded undeveloped property, zoned rural B, single-family home, and the site is bounded by existing families, homes, and property owned by the town, and open space. Topography in this first project, in the cul-de-sac, I'm sorry, the topography slopes from about 560 to an elevation down to 452. Soils on the site, as reported by NRCS, are predominantly hinkley loamy sand with a hydraulic soil group of A, which is, which is good for infiltration. There are no existing utilities on site. There are wooded marshland, wooded marsh wetlands on site, and the 100-year floodplain is also shown on FEMA floodplain maps. Test holes, test holes to determine groundwater elevations were dug back in October 2018 to verify the information by NRCS as well. And so there are two basically drainage areas for this cul-de-sac, and the boundary between them is basically where the, at the current existing asphalt ends. That all drains predominantly back towards the existing street, and then once you get towards the end of the asphalt, the topography then drains generally back towards the wetland on site. There are, for the 10 Mass. DEP stormwater standards, standards 1 through 4 and 9 are applicable to this project. The first standard of no untreated discharges, we've met that with our treatment train of utilizing deep sum catch basins, which drain to an oil grit separator, and then finally, it leads to a proposed infiltration basin. Standard 2, the peak rate attenuation, where the proposed flow and volumes need to meet existing flow volumes, has been met using that infiltration basin as well. Standard 3, recharge volume, I'm going to speak to that in a moment when I get to the third-party engineers' review comments. Standard 4, the water quality standard, has also been met with that, the treatment train previously mentioned, and the use of the infiltration basin. And in the proposed condition, obviously, we're adding, we're going to be adding pavement to, and removing that woodland area and replacing it with, there's a grass strip, The cover type will change and increase what the engineers call the curve number number. The curve number will raise from the existing condition of a 30 up to a 1. And so getting to the last part of my little presentation, the, all the comments provided by the engineering review, WDA is going to incorporate into revised plans, except for, we have a difference of opinion. There was a comment about the test, there was a comment about the pond elevation was too low, and that we don't have the required two-foot separation from the bottom of the pond to existing groundwater elevation. The revised plans are going to show spot elevation at test pit number 10-1805, to give the review engineer better, you know, information, just so that he can see that the test pit there was at an elevation of 455.1, and it has a depth, the depth to groundwater was 62 inches. So that would put the existing seasonal high groundwater elevation at 449.9. That elevation is 2.1 feet below the proposed bottom of the pond of 452. So I think with some clarity shown on the plan, the review engineer will be able to see that information a little bit better, and will be able to come together on, on that, the third stormwater requirement. Barry, I'll give it back to you.
Excellent, thank you, Scott. The, oh, Greg, sorry. Just to highlight in there, we have, as I mentioned before, we have talked with the department heads. There is a water stub that was left during the construction of Cypress There is a water stub that was left during the construction of Cypress Ave some years ago at the intersection in Greenbrier that we intend on connecting up to. That would be the low-pressure system, not the high-pressure water main system that's in that vicinity. So we have discussed with them on that. The, as mentioned, we have submitted the definitive plan package to you folks early in September. We've received comments, both from Bernie and Jeff Walsh and Gray's Engineering. We have responded back with our comments and agreed with all the comments that they had, with the exception of that one, it just needs some clarification for them, and that'll be shown on our final plans and should be addressed on that. So with that, I ask that the board vote to approve this particular project, definitive plan, and as it's designed. Any questions?
Okay. I have a few, but I'm going to go around the board first, okay?
Sure.
Mr. Rowe, do you have any questions?
No questions, sir.
What about you, Mr. Jerry?
Not at this time, no.
Mr. Rota-Lakers?
No, it's kind of hard to, you know, tell what the, obviously, this is a prelude to something else. Without seeing what the next act is, it's kind of hard for me to comment. I think that, you know, they're creating the cul-de-sac for the purpose of creating frontage for another contemplated project. So I guess I'll wait to see what comes forward in the next phase.
Mr. Thomas?
I'll defer to you first.
Okay. So a couple of, I guess, administrative things for me at first. I went down to the neighborhood earlier today, and what I didn't see on the plans over here were any structures on the abutters property that I would like to have on these plans, so that we have a sense of where the impacts are to direct the abutters, okay? And I would take that as a learning opportunity for the next subdivision plans that you may be looking to propose, that all the abutters properties and structures are shown on the plans as well, okay?
Okay, you're talking additional structures of neighbors and like...
Physical homes of the, in this particular area.
Okay.
That is, has the impact, okay? So this is 5 Cypress Ave. I can't see, it's kind of overwritten over here, but all the area around where this particular one is, I'd like to see the structures, so we have an idea of what the impacts are there. Secondly, I guess the first question, another question would be, have you gone before conservation yet?
We have not gone to Conservation Commission yet on this. I think there was a little miscommunication or understanding on that with the future. As you said, there may be a future project down the road combining as one. We will submit to CONCOM for this project, this project here, and be on their next agenda.
Very good. Just as a point of reference, because I'm not sure that you've come before this board. This board typically will not make decisions until conservation is closed.
I have heard that now.
Okay. Thank you for understanding. Another thing is where your, where the cul-de-sac, if you look at sheet C2.01, the, well, actually, even the hash, the crosshatched area showing the, where the, sorry, hold on a second, I think it's 0.04. Should have left it on that one, my apologies. Give me one second. Okay, C1 dot 01, which is the crosshatched area where the area of tree clearing is expected to happen?
Yep.
It, it looks like you're going to do tree clearing directly up to the abutter, okay? I would caution you to ensure that a proper, I guess, assessment of what trees are on your property versus the other. There are a lot of small trees over there, I noticed today. I'd be nervous that you encroach on the neighbors, okay? So before any tree clearing is to happen, that, that would be very clearly identified, which trees would to be affected. And then, again, I'm just throwing ideas out here, okay? When I look at the landscape planning after, which is on C4 dot 00, with all that tree clearing happening there, I'm not certain that we have enough screening, certainly on the 5 Cypress Ave element or side of that project. So I'd like to take a look at that. It's, it's pretty sparse.
Yep.
And a question, for the use of the cul-de-sac, you're not expecting to have a driveway come off of that to go to a particular home, right?
No.
Okay. With that being said, and it's only for a turnaround, and I see that you have firetruck routes for the safety aspect of, is there something that can be done in the center of it to beautify it in some way with some horticultural type of thing? It'll actually help with reducing the amount of infiltrate, of increase the infiltration area? I'm just, again, throwing ideas out there, just to, instead of having to look out at an open concrete area, to have something better there.
Yep.
Okay. That's about all I have, my initial comments on this. Does anybody else on the board have any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to also comment on the landscaping, as we spoke of that, about the clearing. I agree with Mr. Belay about the clearing on the neighbor abutters. I think it should be cleared as little as possible and probably better screening than what's proposed on sheet 4, C400. That was really my main concern, was about the landscaping and the clearing around the cul-de-sac. And there are some neighborhoods in town that use landscaping in the middle of a cul-de-sac that looks nice. So I think that would also add to the feature of the cul-de-sac, because I don't think it just needs to be an impervious surface. That's all I really have.
Okay. That being said, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself with your name and address. I think you can walk right up to the microphone here, if you don't mind.
My name is George Germanos. I'm at 6 Redwood Lane, Shrewsbury, Mass. I had a couple of questions. As far as that groundwater elevation, was that based off the 2008 test, 2018 test, or is that recent?
I'll ask the applicant to respond.
Groundwater, when was that, Greg?
Oh, you're muted.
I'm mute.
Sorry about that. The tests were performed in October of 2018.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, my second comment is, I mean, we have it shown here as a sub-development, and as we can all see, there's, there's a turnaround. And it's really hard for us to kind of approach this in any other way than to say, what is this? It's a turnaround, but there's the potential of it going to nowhere. So for my concern, being in that neighborhood, let's say this doesn't get approved. What do I have? I have a turnoff, which is blind, off a main road near the high school, which is either a perfect dumping ground or an area where they can, you know, kids can congregate, or anybody can congregate. So I have serious safety concerns. I think there's some assumptions that are being made here, based on really nothing. We don't have anything to base it off of. So I think to go forward with this plan as is makes no sense. Where is the benefit to the town? And there is, it's actually detrimental, based on what we're saying here today. So, I mean, those are my main concerns.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barlikas?
Yeah, you know, I, I agree with you, Mr. Germanos, as a practical matter, but it's a practical matter for the applicant, too. If they don't get the, you know, the next project, they're never going to build this. It's going to, it would cost them several hundred thousand dollars, and maybe they get a house lot out of it, maybe, maybe two. And I'm not sure it'd be economically feasible. So my, my gut feeling is that if they get this subdivision approved, and we have to approve a subdivision that conforms to our rules and regulations, we're required to statutorily, if they get it approved, they're not going to build it unless and until, I could be wrong, but it's practically business, you know, business judgment would say they would not build this until they got the second phase of whatever contemplated project they're thinking about bringing forward before the board, because it would be several hundred thousand dollars, you know, out of spite, you know? People don't do that generally.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I guess, again, I don't know what this is. Honestly, I don't know that this is appropriate to what this is, because I don't know what this is. So this may be fine for, I don't know what.
You don't know either.
I go, you know, to say that this is appropriate for what it's being developed for, but you don't have a development, I don't know how you make a decision off of that. I guess, again, this could be my ignorance, and it could be a process that I don't understand, but as it is today, I, I, I don't know where to go. You know, I am in the abutter, and for me, I know there's going to be encroachment on my property where I am. There's no way they can put an access road into the area. So I would really like to understand, you know, from a complete perspective, out of all fairness. I mean, if there is meetings that have been happening, we're not aware of them as abutters. So I think the, whatever Zoom meetings happened, or whatever, whatever conversations happened, again, we don't even have that perspective. So it's really hard for me to comment any more than I am right now.
Neither do we.
And we haven't had meetings either.
This is our first meeting.
This is our first meeting. You may have had meetings with other town staff, not with the planning board.
It sounds like it's being socialized, yet it's not being, you know, actually worked. And that's an issue.
I understand. I understand your point.
We're the guys who have all the votes, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay, that being said, I guess we're going to, we're going to need to find out what's going on with Conservation, so I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
You're going to have enough time to go before you need a month or two?
We'll go up, I think, we'll, we've got to have the information in by October, end of the month, for their meeting in, when did I have that written down? Deadline to file is October 28th for their next November 16th meeting.
It's going to have to be December.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because our next meeting's November 4th, so you won't have the information before that. Sorry, Steve.
No worries. We're a team. If it then works well. So we typically don't extend past the next month, but I'm perfectly open to not wasting everybody else's time to come in. We know we're not going to get information from Conservation, so I would entertain a motion.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the definitive subdivision plan for Zero Greenbrier Drive until Thursday, December 2nd at 7:00 PM. And again, that is the only notice that people will get.
The abutters.
The abutters.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we'll see you in December.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Sure. Our next public hearing is a new public hearing for a commercial building addition, site plan modification. Eversource is location 15 Fortune Boulevard. You're ready to set this up, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, do we have a legal notice for this one?
Fortune Boulevard, yes, we do. Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, October 7th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the selectman's hearing room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, to hear the application of Eversource, 107 Selden Street, Berlin, Connecticut, 06037, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury's owner by law, Section 7, subsection F3, a site plan modification by the planning board to allow for the construction of an 11,000-square-foot addition at 15 Fortune Boulevard. Proposed development is shown on plans entitled Proposed Building Expansion located at 15 Fortune Boulevard, in 11 sheets dated September 9th, 2021, stamped by David S. Kelly, P.E. The subject property is located on the north side of Green Street and east of Centec Boulevard and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Pay 49, plot 005000. A copy of the application, plans, and reports may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, and on the planning board website.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Is the applicant present? Please introduce yourself. Tell us why you're here. Is that going to work for public?
No.
I don't see, trying to think of anything.
Sure. I can also put it up on the screen myself on my computer.
Do we have any abutters here?
True, you don't have anything that nice, but we can do most.
The home yours, yes.
Just want to make sure the board has the plan, so if you could just show it to the public that are great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is David Kelly with Noridian Associates. I'm here with a representative from RH White and representative of Eversource. I'm sure you folks are very familiar with this project. It's just constructed a couple of years ago, and in the rear of the building, we just want to put an 11,000-square-foot addition to add additional training rooms. Really straightforward, rerouting some of the utilities, and, yeah.
Pretty much it?
Yeah.
I understand, it is pretty straightforward. So I guess I'll first go around the board and find out if anyone has any questions. Mr. Rowe?
No questions, Jeff.
I have no questions.
All set.
All set.
The only question I have is on the vehicles, there were some parking spaces that were moved to make this allowable, right?
Yep. So there were the, like, the large vehicle striped spots?
Yes.
And based on conversations with Eversource, they didn't use those that often?
So there was never anything in use there, so the loss of them is not going to have any impact to the site circulation?
Correct. We spoke with operations at Eversource, and that was not an issue.
Okay. All right. All the only question I had, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Not seeing any hands, so I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing on the site plan modification for 15 Fortune Boulevard.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We do have a draft decision that was brought to our attention today. Anybody have any questions or comments relative to the draft decision?
None.
I do not.
No, no questions, Mr. German.
None at all? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the clerk to execute the decision entitled Decision of the Planning Board Regarding Application for Site Plan Modification, 15 Fortune Boulevard, Eversource.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item of business is a new public hearing for a mixed-use commercial residential development, site plan approval and special permit for Harrington Avenue 34 LLC, location 34 to 36 Harrington Avenue. Mr. Thomas, legal notice, please.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, October 7th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the selectman's hearing room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, to hear the application of Harrington Avenue 34 LLC, 37 West Milbury Road, Sutton, Mass. 01590, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury's owner by law, Section 7F3 and Section 7M6A, for site plan approval and special permit by the planning board to allow the construction of a horizontal mixed-use development consisting of approximately 2,000-square-foot retail building, approximately 18,240 square feet apartment building with 16 units at 34 to 36 Harrington Avenue. The proposed development is shown on plans entitled SOT Development Plan for 34 to 36 Harrington Avenue, dated September 15th, 2021, consisting of 10 sheets prepared by JM Grenier and Associates Incorporated, 325 Donald Lynch Boulevard, Suite 100 Marlborough, Mass. 01752, stamped by Kevin J. Jarvis, PLS, and John Grenier, P.E. The subject property is located east of Harrington Avenue and north of Boston Turnpike and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Pay 32, plot 105000. and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Pay 32, plot 105000. A copy of the application, plans, and reports may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the planning board website.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Grenier, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, John Grenier, J.M. Grenier Associates. Also here with Dean Temple of Dario Design, who is the architect on the project. So I can give you kind of an overview of the design. Dean can probably get into the specifics of the designs of the building and how that ties into the Lakeway overlay district. And then we can tell you where we stand with other boards and commissions. So just in case anybody is not familiar, this is right across from Lakeway Commons on Harrington Ave. It's on the north side of Route 9. It has been a vacant property. It's been abandoned for, I don't even, as long as I've known it, decades. There is a condemned building on the site right now. So what we're looking to do is to redevelop this under the Lakeway mixed-use overlay district and have a horizontal mixed-use that would consist of a 2,000 square foot commercial slash retail building along the frontage, along Harrington Ave, with a multifamily building on the southerly side of the property. It is an odd-shaped lot, which makes it a little bit unique. We were able to meet all of our requirements for parking, open space, and we were able to achieve all of our drainage by doing it subsurface on the, on the easterly side of the proposed residential building. We did receive comments from the town's consultant engineer, Graves Engineering. In, in our estimation, it's minor, nothing that would change the scope of the project. So we feel confident that we can address any of the minor comments from, from the town's consultant civil engineer. We did also get comments from the town's planning department. And again, nothing we think that would change the scope of the project. There was one comment regarding the proximity of the access driveway in relation to the driveway that goes off of Harrington Ave into Lakeway Commons and the proximity to what's shown as Johnson Street, which is really the back driveway to Walgreens. That's where I believe they used to get a lot of their, anything, any commercial vehicles that go in there for, for any of their loading and delivery. So that's not really where anybody comes in for, if you pull into Walgreens, you pull in, you know, off of Route 9 or right around the corner on, from Harrington on there. That's like the back driveway for deliveries. So that's not really, that doesn't really have a lot of traffic coming off Harrington Ave. And there's really limited, obviously, if you look at it, there's limited space for, off of our frontage because of the irregular shape. So we will talk about, I believe it was the police chief who had some comments about that, Bernie? So we'll address those with, with the police chief and make sure if there's anything he needs or wants, we can address those. So really, that's, that's the long and short of it. It's, we're trying to keep in, keeping with the Lakeway overlay district. And I think that Dean with Dario Design did a fantastic job with the look of the building. And I'll give it to Dean right now. He can kind of go through the particulars of how they meet the specifications for the Lakeway overlay district.
Thank you. Thank you all for letting us speak tonight.
I'm not sure if you have that.
The elevation?
Yeah.
Is it part of the plan, sound separate?
It would have been separate. Oh, there you go.
Oh, yeah. So as John says, a multifamily apartment building, which is set down low on the site. And then the retail portion of the building is set right up on Harrington Street. And we took a lot of cues for our building from the buildings across the street, trying to keep in, you know, the same kind of vernacular. And then also going through the Lakeway overlay district guidelines. We took a lot of that stuff into consideration as well. I have a point by point, but I won't bore you with that. I, I will submit that to the board via email. But materials, all, you know, strong materials, no, no plastic, no vinyl siding. We do have composite, you know, corner boards, because they, they stand up to a lot of use. We have some nice brick at the base and some other different materials to help reduce the scale. It's only a two-story, plus there's a three-story portion at the back here, which covers these, about these three units, just on this side. And yeah, brick at the base and the same materials, both for the retail center as well as for the apartment building. So, you know, so the buildings talk to each other and they don't look out of place on the same site. Specifically made a gable end to the retail end of the building, which is the side that faces Harrington. So as you drive by, you'll see, you know, a classic gabled shaped building, so to look. And it's not, not very large, so it doesn't, you know, overpower the street. That would be asked for shingles, glass, you know, awnings, that kind of stuff over the entryways. That's pretty much it, unless you had a specific question.
Okay, I'll go around the board. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Mr. Rao?
The elevation seems to match the current Lakeway District, Lakewood Commons type, so that I like it. As the fire department and others have expressed some concerns that too many driveways are coming onto Harrington Avenue and as long as the applicant addresses those, you know, we have CVS, we have Lakeway Commons traffic coming up, Walgreens and others. So the, the traffic part is one of the concerns. So if they address that reasonably well, I think I'll be okay with that.
Okay. Mr. Jerry?
I mean, I'm a little concerned with the one entrance and exit to the property and, and also I'm trying to understand the layout of where you enter the, the apartment building relative to the parking. Because the, the parking seems distributed sort of strangely to me in a way like it's almost too much parking in front of the retail and not enough for the apartment building. But I'm trying to understand where the entrance to this building is. Is it on the end facing the retail?
Yeah, it's on the end. There's some brickwork on the front of it there, on the, on the short side.
Yep.
That would be the main entrance to the apartment building.
Okay. And so you'd envision those five spaces immediately where you pull in on the right as more likely serving the apartment building than the retail?
Yes, yes. And also keep in mind with the retail, that's more daytime traffic, where the apartment building would be obviously more, more late afternoon, evening.
You're presuming that people don't work from home?
Presume, yeah. Because nobody does that anymore.
No.
But we do envision being, obviously, it's not designated, so there, there might be some overlap. But we would envision that in evening hours, that there would be the use for the, for the residential on those, those five that are on to the right of the, the entrance.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Verdelakis?
So just on the elevation, so there's not gonna be vinyl, because the, your elevations show vinyl?
So you have an older elevation, I think, and it did say, it did say vinyl on it, but I took, I took that off. The clapboard siding that you see would be hardy siding.
Okay.
Yep. Corner boards would probably be PVC.
Yeah.
And then we have some of the, some of the panels would be a sheet of PVC, but not, not vinyl siding that gets dented and broken.
And I think the elevations look good. John, does this site, this property have any rights in Johnson Street?
Not, not to my knowledge, no. No.
Just wondering whether there'd be an opportunity if you move the building north, you know, maybe like an emergency or bypass access.
And I, I agree with that. No, that's part of the Walgreens, so that's the entity that owns it. It's Cole &amp; Bonin.
Yeah, yeah, but doesn't, you don't have rights to pass and repass.
No, not, not from anything that, that Kevin Jarvis got in his research.
He didn't pick it up in the survey, okay.
No. But I'll note to the, in, in one respect, the, the fire department thought it was, it was kind of nice to have that just for access. To be able to, if there is an issue, they can pull in there and, and get at the property, so.
So it might be worth exploring.
Yeah.
Okay, it would be helpful, Dean, to have that chart, because I know when we did the Lakeway Common District initially, you know, there was a lot of design standards within the bylaw that ultimately Mr. Grossman came in and we amended the bylaw substantially in order to make it work, like. So if you just go through and just show why this is compliant.
Yeah, yeah, so I did, yeah.
A table.
I'll provide, I went through literally point by point and, and responded. So I didn't want to bore everybody with reading, but I will, I'll email this out.
Right, so that complies with the setbacks and... Because it is, you know, it's a tight site, but that's what the Lakeway Common District envisioned.
Right. Yeah, I took two architects and a civil engineer to, to get this thing to work. It was, it was quite a chore.
And you'll, what, be providing two affordable units?
Yeah. I believe it's, yeah, I think it's, I think it's three.
Three?
Ten, ten percent.
Ten percent. Was it 18 units?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yes, two.
I think it's three.
Okay.
Because it's fif, is it fifteen percent?
Fifteen percent? I thought it's 10.
I thought it was 10. Residential is, isn't residential 10? I thought the firm, well, I mean, unless it's multifamily.
This says, "Low-income affordable housing mixed development shall provide 10%."
See, I saved your money.
Oh, see, she's two, two.
Saves your money.
She's the, the checks in the mail.
Rebecca thanks you.
Yeah, yeah, I want to thank you very much.
So where do you stand with conservation, John?
So we, we filed with conservation. We have a meeting coming up in another week and a half. That'll be our first hearing. It's buffer zone only, so we're not filling any wetlands. We're, you know, meeting all the stormwater standards, so we think it should be fairly straightforward. And, and I would suggest with conservation, when I was on site doing, you know, all my testing and all my recon, there's a lot of trash down in that wetland area. I saw a broken toilet and it was, I don't know where this stuff comes from. But, so we'll be looking to try to clean that up at the same time. So we anticipate a, a pretty straightforward process with conservation.
Is there a cul, is that, is it, I think there's a culvert over on the Walgreens site. I think there's some sort of intermittent type of...
Well, I know it's, it's just wetlands. It's really not a stream.
No?
You know what's funny, it doesn't, on the town's GIS, you would, from looking at it on the town's GIS, you would think it's a stream. But, you know, on the USGS maps, I think it's just, it's just a straight wetland. So there's no issues with, you know, streams, intermittent, perennial, anything like that.
Not my issue anyhow.
Yeah.
All right, I'm all set.
Okay. Mr. Thomas?
Let me first start by saying I am glad to see something's going to happen at that site because it's been a disaster for as long as I can remember. Like John said, I don't remember anyone ever living there. With that being said, to me, I have some concerns, obviously, with the traffic in that area. I have some concerns with the internal queuing in, inside this development. I have some concerns with the amount of parking you have. I know you have enough parking, but I don't see any overflow parking. I don't see any place for snow storage. To me, it's a nice development. It, it's, it's good for the neighborhood and I think it's good for there. I believe there's too many units. I believe it should be scaled back some to add more room for better flow, more parking, more snow storage, less traffic. I don't feel as if it should be as big as it is, just for those reasons. I, I do like, I do like it. I'm not, I don't want to sit here and tell you that I don't think it's a good project. I do. I think it's too, and I know you fit in with a lot of the requirements and stuff and, and, and... Just to me, it's too much. It's too, that area is so saturated now that I think that what's here is only going to make it worse. So I think by scaling it down a bit, I mean, I like the commercial. Scaling down the apartments a little bit would make me more comfortable with it, but I do like it very much.
And, and we understand that. And just looking at it from the, the viability of the project, where there is a affordable component, obviously, there's, that doesn't help the viability of it. It's, it's a detraction as opposed to an asset to it. The retail portion of it, you know, this parcel is set back quite a ways off of Harrington Ave. It's not like you're, you know, good visibility for retail, commercial, you're not gonna get, it's not like Class A retail space. So obviously, we're making this compliant with having a retail slash commercial component. But in, from a financial standpoint, it's, the, the retail commercial is kind of a drag on, on the value of it, pound for pound. So there is, the, the reason where we need to try to keep the unit count up is because of there is an affordable component and the, you don't get as, really that much bang for the buck out of the, out of the commercial retail portion of it. So it's, it's challenging. It's challenging to be viable. So I just want to let you know the other side of...
I totally understand. No, I, I, I get it. I understand that part of it, but you have to look at my side of it, too.
I get it.
You know, like looking at it from, to me, as a safety standpoint and making the project work, those are my concerns with it. In, in knowing the neighborhood, knowing how, how the traffic is there, especially now with Lakeway Commons, you know, you have the fire station right there. That's always, there's a jam up there all the time. The fire trucks have trouble getting out as it is. You know, now you're adding 16 units in, in the retail, you know, it just, it, it... I would like to see it scaled down.
Understood.
Okay. Okay. I somewhat echo some of the comments that Mr. Thomas made. I did ask Mr. Cahill to give me, just for the benefit of the public, what was there, even though it may have been several decades ago. And there were 13 units between both those structures in the past. So this is slightly larger, but obviously, the area has changed significantly from the time it was inhabited before, right? Seeing as you thought you had three affordable units that needed to go. And now we're down to two. Now we're down to two. And in an effort to try to scale this back, would, would you take a look at the financial viability? Keep in mind, finance is not our business.
I, I get it.
But what would the financial viability be, even if you took two of the units away? Right, that allows for the size to get down, it gets closer to what somewhat mimicked what was in use in the past. It doesn't address some of the traffic concerns still, and I think the fire department will come up with maybe some suggestions and they'll have to find a way to incorporate it. But that might, by reducing it by at least two units, you might be able to find a way to kind of help offset some of the traffic concerns that are, that are going on there.
I think, not to interrupt you, sir, but by doing that, you would give yourself more room for overflow parking, which they don't have.
Or the snow storage, I think, because, because it is, it's a very difficult site. Or the snow storage, I think, because it is, it's a very difficult site.
It's all impervious, too.
Yeah, and, you know, you don't, you're going to have to truck everything out of there, right?
Absolutely.
And it's going to be difficult. And I, although, like I said, because of the mixed use, you've got the total numbers of spaces.
Right.
But as was brought up, you know, the amount of people working from home has increased and over time, it may stay that way. I'm assuming, because I did not read this, so my apologies if it was there and I missed it. These are all single-bedroom units?
There's a mix of twelve singles and four doubles.
Okay, so with my count here of eighteen parking spaces for sixteen units, you're not allowing for two vehicles in any one of the units or only a couple of the units? That's where I'm getting at with the parking, as being somewhat of a challenge in my mind to try to offset and the fact that there is no overflow parking for, you know, visitors, for anybody that may be residing.
Or if you have one couple in a one bedroom, you know, two people that drive, this is not enough room.
I just think it's, I think it's a little dense, so if we can curb that back to, you know, what was that? And granted, even though if it went down to fourteen, it's still just a little larger than what it was, but the area around it has completely changed dynamically than what was in the past, so that's just my points.
Does the Lakeway bylaw, I forget, require the mix of bedrooms? Or could you do all ones? If I were you, I would do all ones.
So, Steve, I can answer that. So recently, in just the last couple of years, the state's weighed in and it is, we're not really allowed to dictate bedroom sizes anymore. That is not, that is very frowned upon from the AG's office for us to dictate bedrooms. So the Lakeway, the overlay doesn't have that anyway, but...
Why don't you just do all ones?
Sixteen ones?
I'm not comfortable with sixteen, honestly. That's just me. I can't speak for everybody else, but that's just me.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask?
Sure.
Could you point out, you have here in your calculations, which is correct, twenty-five, I believe, no, twenty-four required, twenty-five proposed. Could you just show the board and the board where those twenty-five are spread out? I see eighteen here, so where are the other seven coming from?
So we have, there's eighteen along the, along the back. And then we have another five right there. And then along the front of the, we have another ten along the front of the retail building.
So two more of the residences are in the commercial area this morning? That's where the other...
There's, yes.
Plus eighteen is only twenty-three, so two more.
Eighteen, so that's twenty-three, so yeah, so there'd be two that if they needed to park, they'd be over on the other side.
I mean, the more I've looked at the plan, my only thing at this point, and I've mentioned to the chair offline, one-on-one, was simply, and you and I just kind of had this brief discussion, is these five here posing a problem in the sense that you have two lines of five, or four and then five backing out into a corridor where automobiles entering and exiting, as well as them backing up into that traffic. It is a concern. I don't necessarily have the answer. Obviously, if you were to take Mr. Blair and Mr. Thomas up on their recommendation to reduce a couple of units, those would be redundant spaces perhaps. But it is something I think I would like at least addressed, how that would work, and the safety-wise, it is a concern to me, traffic pouring out. As for the police department, it might be worth our while, John, for us to have a meeting with Chief Anderson.
Yeah.
So you can direct, or directly answer his questions and I can either, we can just mediate.
Okay, yeah, no, I know care of well.
I would like to get those resolved in the area. But I didn't want to have to start that meeting until we had the discussion here at the board.
Right.
About their opinions, feedback, the public's opinion, feedback, and then we can move ahead with that.
Okay.
So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for reminding me of that. That was a point that was in the back of my mind is, as you're coming up Harrington Ave, the amount of distance you have for queuing to come into the site, should somebody be backing up, is barely, it looks barely enough for a vehicle. And my concern is the backup that's going to happen on Harrington Ave. If they're coming up Harrington to turn in, or even if they're coming down Harrington to turn in, if there's somebody backing out of the early spaces as you enter the site, it's going to cause a queuing problem outside of the site.
All right, we'll take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Yes, sir, please identify yourself and your address.
How you doing? My name's Steve Olson. I own the property at thirty-eight Harrington Ave. So I just had a couple of questions. I'm also excited to see something going into that spot, without a doubt. So I guess I'm just kind of looking at the plans for the first time. I'm just trying to see what's going to be budding that backside of my house on Harrington Ave. It looks to me, from what I'm looking at, it's going to be some parking there perhaps, and how that, I guess the commercial building sounds like it's going to be kind of more up front. And I can certainly go take a look at that plan, but I was just kind of curious about...
You said your address is thirty-eight?
Yeah, thirty-eight Harrington.
I can barely see the plan, so where are you?
So he's actually north of the, of the... So you'll be looking at the backside of the retail business.
Okay, so that's going to be a retail building backed up to that property, so how far off the setback is that setting? I mean, is it right on the edge there or...
We are, we're right on, we're right on the edge. The required setbacks, believe it or not, in the Lakeway Overlay District for side yards are zero, but obviously, you need some room to build it. So it's four, the backside of that building is four feet off of the property line, so off of the fence line.
Okay.
Guess the bright side is you won't have a dumpster back there.
Or trash.
No, it's true.
Yeah, dumpsters around, down near the bottom there.
Yeah.
Are you proposing, sorry, John, are you proposing a fence or something?
There's an existing six-foot white vinyl fence there right now.
Is that on the property that this site is going to be on, or is that...
It's on the property line.
So you guys...
That's your fence.
I believe so, too, yeah. It's right on the property line.
It's going to get trashed, so it's probably going to have to be replaced.
And if it did, we'd obviously take care of it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's really all I had for right now.
Very good, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Gretchen Brenner, and my house is the other, I'm right next to Steve. My husband and I have been taking care of that abandoned building forever, and there's wildlife that lives in there, too, that I'm worried about, that before they knock it down, could they get rid of that? And also, I just wanted to know where, what, that's a budding our property, is it the retail that's going to be...
So it is.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is the retail here, and then this is our house here.
And so we have some, to the right of our building, there's kind of a grass area, so we put a line of arborvitae along the property line.
Right, are you going to leave those arborvitae?
We're going to, we're going to plant new ones.
Okay, okay, and then this is going to be all parking and handicap.
And then, as you go like towards your backyard, there's going to be, the grade starts dropping off. So we'll have a retaining wall there with, which it'll get higher as the further you go back and the grade drops off. But we'll have a fence along that as well.
Okay, okay, we just want to make sure there was like a fence and something to do at first.
Very good, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Carl Abasho. I own the property at sixteen Harrington Ave, which is in between where the new project is and Johnson Street. And I just wanted, I saw some of the drawings and I noticed that the apartment building is very close to the property line towards Walgreens, and in some documents that I have given to Kevin Jarvis, there's a fifteen-foot sewer easement from my property that goes through that property to the sewer connection that goes out through room nine.
And on the plans, the original plans, I can address it. So the original plans that Kevin Jarvis gave me, it shows the sewer easement that is on, off of this property, over on the wetland side. And I think you, he had called me and he said that you...
Called me to give me a heads up, yeah.
Yeah, so he said there is, there, he was going to do some more research, but based on what you said, and there might be, obviously, an easement with a sewer connection. So if we had to relocate that easement to make sure, obviously, we're not...
Of course.
So we would, and that actually might be to everybody's benefit if we upgrade that, a new sewer line, and to make sure everything gets back over into the, where the trunk, where the trunk line is.
Down the road because it's pretty old.
Right, so he had, after he talked to you, he called me up and gave me a heads up.
Okay, good, good.
So whatever it is, we'll show, we'll address.
If you need to get in touch with me, I have some old documents and plans and everything, too. I don't know.
Yeah, give me...
The sewer department didn't have very much at all, but I have, I have some good documents that I'd have to share with you to...
Right, because that's who, I had talked to the DPW about getting, you know, getting plans and getting the, you know, location and inverts of all that.
They don't have much.
No, I got everything they had, and there really wasn't, there wasn't a whole lot.
Can I make a suggestion that maybe you guys get together outside of this?
Sounds good, but that's the only point I wanted to make.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Okay, not seeing any hands. I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the thirty-four to thirty-six Harrington Avenue. Special permit and site plan until Thursday, November fourth at seven PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item of business is proposed zoning bylaw changes for special town meeting twenty-twenty-one. We have one, two, three, four zoning articles to make recommendations for. So Mr. Cahill?
Yes, so I'm not going to go through them all again. We did go through them last time in some detail. I can tell you, since our last meeting, town council has taken a look at these and reviewed them all. He had no major comments. There were a few minor edits, but nothing of substance was changed. I will just go through them at a very high level tonight. I will just remind yourselves, obviously you have copies of them, but anyone watching this evening, they are available on paper in our office, at the town clerk's office, and of course, on both the planning website and the planning board website. So there are plenty of places where you can take a look at these, and I also did a recording this morning as everyone did who's sponsoring articles or representing articles this morning. So those will be available to town media members as well. So just to recap, Article twelve was for the, there is a small, very small modification being made on Lake Street due to the Beale, the new construction of the Beale School, the right-of-way shifted. So of course, the, there was like a couple of feet of zoning district that needed to be adjusted. The, that's Article number twelve. We did get Article numbers as well in the last week. Article number thirteen is going to be the indoor/outdoor restaurants, dealing with those. And that was, again, trying to lower barriers for restaurants, make it a little easier of a process, remove the board, kind of review process from it, make it a more internal staff process. That was that one. There wasn't too much else to that one. Happy to talk about it with anyone. Article number fourteen was, this was the wireless telecommunications towers and facilities. Again, this article was to bring our telecommunications, where it's mentioned in the bylaw, up to, up to snuff, if you will, up to contemporary regulations from the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, to bring it in line with that. And we, the big kind of points where we kind of modified our, some of our definitions to bring them up to modern times, if you will. Some of these are kind of like twenty years old, and obviously, technology's changed. The review and approval of these, especially of towers and small wireless have been taken, well, proposed to be taken out of the hands of ZBA and given to this board for site plan review. And we created a, are proposing to create a subsection of the bylaw which would provide criteria by which the planning board, where this approved, to review one of these, a new tower. We have now a list of criteria and standards that this board would base their decision on and that the applicants would have to abide with, and also in line with what FCC allows us to regulate. And then finally, we have small wireless standards, which, in the public right-of-way, that Selco currently controls, Selco would have purview over that for things like aesthetics and tech requirements. And outside of that public right-of-way, again, it would be this board overseeing small wireless. And then finally, we have Article number fifteen, it's going to be at special town meeting on the eighteenth, is including the town center district in the inclusionary housing. We talked about that earlier tonight with the project. When we did it last year, we weren't quite ready to decide which percentage we wanted to put this under and how we wanted to match it. In the end, we decided to, we're proposing that it would go with the two districts right around it, the B one and B two district, and so it would be twelve point five percent for any project that's over five units. Again, as we spoke about just now with this Harrington project. So those are the four zoning articles, twelve through fifteen. Again, I was recorded this morning, so I believe that will be up and running soon for people to view. You can check it out on the website. Anyone at home can give me a call, shoot me an email, any questions. And I will be presenting as well, let's see, next Tuesday the twelfth at, I think that's the selectmen's meeting, and then Thursday's the finance committee meeting. I'll be presenting there as well. And then, of course, you'll see me at special town meeting on the eighteenth. So, and I got my dates right this time, so we're all good.
We're all good. You know when to show up.
Mine's with my calendar right now, as far as Tommy...
Don't quote the wrong date. You're only submitting...
All right.
All right, so what we need this evening, of course, is, this is the second public hearing, so we need votes on each one to recommend or not recommend to the board. So a motion we made to recommend Article twelve, Article thirteen, and then...
Can we do it as it's late?
Can't do it, yeah.
You, it's probably best if you don't.
It's historically that we've...
You really do need to do all four.
Because they're not going to be bundled, I don't believe.
When they're read out at town meeting, they're read out one at a time.
Because they have zoning changes, so they typically take them one at a time. Before we do that...
It's only four, Steve, it's only four.
This is a public hearing. There is nobody here, so I'm assuming no public comment at this time. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing on the proposed zoning bylaw changes for the special town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll entertain motions to, unless anyone has objection, to recommend approval of these independent articles one at a time.
I move that we recommend approval of Article twelve relative to the town's shoes of rezoning.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move, okay, Article thirteen. I move that we recommend a town meeting approval of Article thirteen relative to section two, section six, table one, section seven, relative to restaurants and outdoor dining.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to approve Article fourteen, to recommend approval to town meeting, for town meeting, that they approve Article fourteen relating to section two, dash, section six, table one, and section seven for telecommunications facilities and small wireless facilities.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, I move that we recommend that town meeting approve Article fifteen relative to section seven dot K, inclusionary housing in the town center district.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. And we don't have any new business to go over?
Mr. Chairman, one very last thing, I promise. I'll let Jay roll his eyes at me. No, it's all right. So next week, the town's going to hear an announcement that we are opening up or allowing public parking around the old Beale School in the town center in the interim period between now and whenever we know what happens next, and it's storied history. So we are going to be making an announcement. There are going to be some parking signs going up next week, and we'll be doing a rollout on social media and the like in town. But we are encouraging people to make use of it. It's a great place to park. I've already parked there a couple of times myself. It's a lot calmer than trying to park off the streets and by the bank and all that. And just to park once and walk around and visit your favorite businesses and restaurants and make use of it, certainly before, well, one day, construction begins, we think. So that is going to be happening next week.
Oh, awesome.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.